So we'll take over that for a few minutes. And.
So you have the four you two, resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero four.
Who is that?
Oh, it's awesome.
That's our speakers?
Oh, probably more.
Pause on pause. You're doing it. I love that song, but.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
We start over. So two thousand sixteen dash zero four is a resolution that classifies spending policies for this current fiscal year. So it's the dollars that are remaining as of June thirtieth, how we prioritize spending in the current fiscal year. It's according to the governmental accounting standards, board statement, fifty-four. It's just standard procedure.
Would that, Commissioner, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number two thousand sixteen dash zero four in establishing policy for fund balances.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? Can you give, there was about five items listed on that.
So the first section, I think we commit balances. What that's saying is when we have general dollars, but we're committing to, to a certain function, that's that classification. So we commit balances in our museum, our landfill, our roundup association, because those are special revenue funds, but there's no legislation that requires that fund to be there. So we have them set out there, but they're using general purpose dollars. So we're assigning and committing those funds to that specific purpose. So we're creating the legislation in essence.
Along with this.
To have those.
Procedure.
Yeah. And then, then it goes into restricted dollars in that we would spend those first in a, in a scenario where if there's co-mingled funds in one fund, if there's general purpose dollars, but there's also restricted by federal government or grant, we would use the restricted dollars first. So that's how that resolution is, what it's designed to do.
Always kind of like to go over stuff we covered yesterday, just to focus on the others.
The other thing I could talk about real quick, oh, you have to vote.
Yeah.
Oh. Motion in a second. Any other discussion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Most good. Thank you, Anne. Do you have any?
I have one comment on the ATV grant. I did already receive a comment from Wade Bryant that yes, the thousand dollars for the kiosk stands are supplies that they have in their possession already. So they're contributing part of those materials to the project. We will have no cash match in that ATV grant.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
And for the audience, the ATV grant is a nonprofit ATV enthusiast that has wanted to put out weight point markers on view of land management, kind of roads and national forests, so that recreationists, when they get to a point of intersection, they know where they're at. But what we've, is asking them to do is address your core service land, but on us at this time is put information in the kiosk.
I, that's not quite right. Yes.
Sounds like a perfect, perfect time to make a motion to accept this, get this offer again.
Go for it.
I'd like to take, I'd like to make motion to accept the two thousand sixteen ATV grant agreement as presented.
I'll second. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Anne.
All in favor?
Aye.
Most good.
No, not of the ATV. It's up here on the.
Thank you. At ten oh five, we're open a public hearing on the transportation system plan update. And we leave the hearing open for all of the citizens that concerned.
I guess I'll ask, um, there are, at least Carl's new, I think Frank was here at one of the previous hearings that we had on this ordinance update. It's going to update our comprehensive plan with new goals and policies related to the transportation statewide planning goals, but also for our zoning ordinance and our land development ordinance. There'll be a few additions in section twenty and one of the other sections in, in land development ordinance, but all related to access management and transportation rules and regulations that the state already has in place that we're adopting to, to come into compliance with, with those state goals. So we've had multiple planning commission and now this is the fourth and final meeting before the board commissioners for transportation update. So if there's anything unsolved, certainly answer it, but like you said, we'll leave it open. If anyone has any questions, welcome to ask.
So the gist I caught from that is that the state has some procedures and arguments and we're updating our plan to.
Yeah, our, our transportation system plan that we have in place right now is from two thousand and two. And so there's a TMG, which is Transportation Group Management Grant that we were awarded, that the rural department implemented this grant with help from Kettleson Engineering and Associates. And they will, you know, they, you know, really drafted with assistance from a, an advisory committee to, to develop, you know, the goals and, and the needs of the county. This doesn't include Lakeview itself. They decided not to participate in this process.
The, the town of Lakeview had the option.
Yep.
To cost, match cost for a grant.
Right.
And they opted not to.
At this time, yeah.
At this time, do that. But all of our department heads through the process and everything that had, had an influence on this transportation plan from our airport to our railroad to our road. We met several times and we believe we've got our best shot at everything, the needs of Lake County in it. And at the same time, it can be amended. Myself through the two thousand and two, when we done it before, and this time here also, and there's a lot of good work went into it. I believe we caught pretty much everything, but there could be some things missed.
And, and a lot of, what we've done is prioritize, you know, a lot of the projects that we want to get done. And so by having them prioritized on, in our plan, then we can, you know, when we're applying for grants, you know, like connect attorney grants, we can say that we've got them in our, in our queue to get accomplished. And, you know, that's why we'll be more successful in getting grants in the future. Very important.
Now, leave the hearing open then. Thank you, Anne. And we have Carl Shumley that you want me to address. And before that, last week when it's up, you gave me some things and the only and out of mouth to some point, not a policy, but.
Okay. Want me to address that now?
Yes.
Recently, as you know, I've given you two packets of paperwork, all relating to land use planning, code enforcement. And I covered a pretty wide swath, trying to, I guess, further explain some of the other issues surrounding land use planning. And one of the things was I wrote a letter to, to our sheriff, but, and to explain that it was just to let you know the reasons I wrote a note to Sheriff Taylor, trying to let him know that so much of this code enforcement should not involve his department. What people do need to know is that his department is there to back up actions taken by the planning or building department, including the commissioners. At our earlier meeting, I know that Sheriff Taylor was concerned about how much it would involve him. But I think a lot of this land use enforcement does not involve the sheriff's department. It's paperwork back and forth. And code violations are actually violations against the property and not a person. So I think hopefully that alleviates some of the concerns the sheriff had, but there could be a time when he is needed. Secondly, I wrote a note about the past economic development committee, was to remind you that we do not need to delay these matters whether net or committee or study. We own something has to be done. And the issue I raised about whether or not something is zone C one or R one is not of immediate priority, at least not to me. But certainly what does appear to be the highest priority is getting control of people, bringing in more RVs, campers, cars and boats. And it's, it's just happening weekly, if not daily. And on that issue, the controversy is around the interpretation of whether the, the mobile home storage unit is actually storage and retail.
Seventeen five.
So I would just like to ask the commissioners to at some time write up what they feel the difference between a storage lot and a retail mobile home sales lot actually is. And I would just like to have that information that I could give them. So the main reason I'm here today is because I filed a complaint against a property owner, which I believe his actions are in violation of permitted uses for R one zone properties. And I believe the building department, the planning department, and the commissioners has a copy of my complaint. I don't know how you want me to address that here today. You all can read it and see what my concerns are.
Is that the one on the shoreline of the lake?
It's on the lake. And just as an update, on our original tour up there on the twenty second of June, there was one RV, a yurt, a portable potty, and a storage building. And just a few days later, when we had a second tour, there was two RVs, storage building, and a yurt. Today, there's two RVs, a storage building, a yurt, and a yacht. Looks like a yacht to me. It's almost as big as the RV. It's huge. But nothing really is in place yet. And I think it's an appropriate time to have a conversation as per my complaint with this property owner to let him know what he is and is not allowed on R one's own lot. I think it's a very reasonable request, and I think it's something that could be dealt with immediately. And I didn't have any time because this, I didn't write this thing up until Sunday evening. And then I decided on Monday I might write up maybe a signature page and maybe see if somebody in the community was willing to support my complaint. So I did that and I didn't run around with it because I didn't have the time, but I gave out some pages to a couple of people and they ran around the community and just in a very short period of time gathered up about fifteen names or whatever it is. And on the signature page, I left a line so that they could have a comment, if they wanted to comment about this. And some of these comments are probably not exactly the things you want to necessarily hear in an open meeting, but they're not that bad either. But I have these signature pages I'd like to offer in support of my complaint. And would there, would there be any question from the commissioners about my complaint or from the planning department?
Well, be straightforward with you, Carl, the, I as commissioner, I don't speak for Commissioner Kestner or whatever. On that, I would go right through our planning director and have, where the permitting and everything goes through as far as it being a residential zone, an R one zone, and if they are or not in compliance. So my question would, comes to me, we go straight to Darwin, is are these guys in compliance? And you don't have to answer that absolutely right this time unless you researched that, but that's where the complaint would end up would be, okay, Darwin, you take this and you let us know at the board of commissioners, are these guys in compliance? If they're not, however, we'll address it.
Okay. Well, Darwin's office should have a copy of my complaint, so I guess I'll wait for a response from, from Darwin then. Is that the appropriate thing?
Well, I, I sort of cut Darwin off. I don't know about him.
No, so when we went up there a couple of weeks back now, there was thirty-three properties specifically in, in what is this, and a letter attached to it with the specifics on each of the properties. The complaint that you're talking about now, which you have supporting signatures for, is that for the property with the yurt? Is that specifically for that one? And so was that what you gave me this morning?
Well.
Or was this, this letter, Carl, was this concerning that or was it?
This was ours sent the other day with.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah. Two, two attachments, one page each. Okay.
Actually, the complaint was just a single page along with these signatures.
So I appreciate the work that you're doing. I know, I know it's of great concern to you. And I will tell you that, that the counties, you know, we, as you know, we have a nuisance ordinance, and it also talks about a form that would be established by, you know, the county. And we've got that form. It's on the website. It's something that we prefer, you know, be submitted and, and we can attach what you've given. But it also asks for photo evidence so that we can not have to make separate trips up there or have the sheriff's department make us a separate drive-by. And, and really that's just to, you know, make sure that the record has exactly which property we're talking about so that we can document that we're hitting the right property when we go ahead and start the enforcement process, send in letters to them specifically. So I know you visit all these properties and know the area very well and can, can easily accomplish that just to, to supplement into this, this record. But I know that that, you know, everything that you submitted, we, you know, we, you know, we're here today, hear you, appreciate it. And, you know, as you know, we're trying to work on, on the problem and a solution. But currently, it's been something that, that I've, you know, been, been assigned to, to implement. And as Brad said, my first job is planner and then to see if it meets our, our planning regulations. And then if it, if it, if it does or doesn't, then we can send out a, a land use compliance, you know, a request for compliance. But if it's a nuisance and it falls under, under that, that ordinance, nuisance ordinance, which has a whole different list of, of procedures that we'll take to, to ensure compliance. And, you know, knowing, knowing the, you know, the thirty-three that we were shown the other day on that trip, you know, many, you know, are a camper that maybe been there for years and, or a boat for years. And, and that is something that we definitely need to, to try to, you know, tighten up our ordinance if that's what the board feels is necessary and the citizens essentially who they represent, you know, as, as the whole community here of, of Lake County. I would say that, that there, there's probably nothing in our ordinance currently that says you can't park your vehicle or, or recreational vehicle on your property. Now, living in it, certainly that is an issue. And that, that's something that, that, you know, if we can, you know, document that people are living there, then that's something that we need to, you know, a land use complaint and, you know, violation is occurring. And then we would, we would, you know, get on, on that appropriately by sending them a letter saying you're out of compliance with our zoning ordinance.
Well, I certainly would take exception to a lot of what you just said there, Darwin. What, and, and page thirty-two of your, your ordinance says specifically what is allowed on an R one lot. And turning your R one lot into a storage lot, whether it's an RV, a boat, cars, or whatever it is, it's not, it's not a permitted use. It's not even a per, a use permitted by conditional use. But I've also already gave you the information of the, the legal owner of that property that was submitted in the packet I gave the commissioners. What I'm lacking is the pictures, which I'll get you. But I think it's prudent or I would think advisable for someone to at least have contact with this property owner and let them know that I've raised the issue, that I believe he's in violation of what's permitted on an R one's own lot. Right now, nothing is attached. If you sit around and let him place these in a more of a fixed manner to accomplish, the end result is going to be a bigger challenge. But meanwhile, I will, I will get pictures and I'll get, I'll redo the information on the legal owner to him.
Okay, Carl, going back just to, whenever we toured up there, the, the, the part of the tour was is that the board of commissioners, through our budgeting time, we were looking at a way to start coming to the next level of nuisance slash code enforcement. That was one of the bases of going there. It was a great opportunity to look at a lot of things that seemed to be out of compliance. And, and we're very concerned that. We're going to follow up on all this. The process we have to be very aware of, the complaint goes to Darwin through our form and we address that. We're starting to mold over a couple different things here. I want to make sure that we have some land use, R one zone things that may be addressed through Darwin's as a planning director. And then we have nuisance ordinances, which is another part of it. This board of commissioners, we're pretty much committed to the dollars we've set aside to try to find out the best way to start in a little bit more aggressive, getting somebody in place for nuisance slash code enforcement. So we, we're not there yet. We're getting there. But you get the complaints to them, the ones that through our process, we will address those. He will follow up on them. But Darwin, you did, as soon as we got back from that tour at the state level, I believe you checked on yurts and anything that's allowable or not allowable based around yurt, yurt. I remember seeing an email. What did you find out on that?
So I think the email you talked about was possibly from Greg. Is that right? So, you know, a yurt itself is.
The, the buildings, I think. Somebody sent it out.
And Jennifer certainly can speak for herself on this, but, but a yurt itself doesn't classify as a, as a single family dwelling under the definition of what a yurt is. And so, you know, a lot of people will, you know, they're, like any other structure or building, you know, everything comes in different shapes and sizes and, and can be classified different ways if it meets building code. And so the one that's there, I, I don't know, I know it's been there for some time. I don't know if it was, you know, just set up as kind of like a tent and just left there. The, you know, the property owner comes back to, you know, intermittently. But, but if it's being used as a dwelling, then, and it doesn't meet building codes, it's never been, you know, no building permits ever been applied for, then if they're living there, then, then that's a land use violation. And that's pretty clear and simple from state law. However.
I just wanted to let you know, and I'm sorry, Jennifer did check on, I believe, but we did follow up on that. And it's, it's part of the process. We're still in there. Probably not as fast as you would like, Carl, but people did take things quite seriously.
And it's just like Jennifer said at, at our meeting, any living quarters requires a building permit, and there is no building permit. And my definition of a yurt is a really nice tent. But the other issue that, that I sent you papers on was how to address code enforcement. Do you want me to go to that now?
Well, I think so because I'm saying two different things. One is a nuisance. The other is, it doesn't meet a planning and doesn't get a building.
And that's a conflict I have with the planning department. I believe these are land use violations, not nuisance ordinances. I don't believe we looked at a nuisance ordinance or something that would be covered by the nuisance ordinance in our tour. I think everything we looked at is land use issues.
I don't, I don't think our land use on, as far as the numerous buildings, outbuildings that are on property right now, I don't think we have anywhere in place that says you can't have numerous outbuildings.
You're, you're correct. It does not say you can't. But what it does say is what you can do.
Okay. So.
So.
So as far as an accessory structure, you're saying we need to name in our ordinance how many you can have.
That's something that I've never read in your ordinance of whether or not you have a limit on how many storage buildings or containers that you're allowed to place on property. But in any case, they come after the fact that you have a building permit for a primary residence. We looked at examples up there of how you could destroy not only your lot, which is a neighborhood, by multi-storage buildings. We looked at a piece that had five of them, and then he fenced them together. We looked at a place that had four containers and he fenced them together. And you can see how the, not having that clear in the code leads to violations like this. And that's something I was trying to address.
I'll, I object one. It'd be better if you had a legal counsel here that he's occupied up towards something else. But a lot of ordinances and things that maybe the sheriff can elaborate from a bigger aspect. A lot of time, they word it in what can be done. Because to identify what can be done, you're never going to cover any possibilities. So a lot of statutes and ordinance, to my understanding, are put in a positive. This is what is allowed as opposed to stating what can't.
Yeah. And hopefully I'm going to address that in a minute, if you want me to go forward with it. Evidently, nobody back here anyway has a copy of my, my ideas on how we might go forward with code enforcement. And it was a full page. You want me to read it?
Well, is that the second attachment that you sent?
Yes.
We have.
Yeah, we have. We have.
Okay. Well, then, because I kind of go through what I think is a simpler, easier way to actually implement code enforcement, but I know, or I realize that code enforcement can be scary, confusing, or upsetting, especially if you don't understand it. And I believe the easiest, simplest, efficient way to have code enforcement is the literal interpretation of the written codes or ordinance. And that's what we were talking about. If something is confusing to you or need to be added to clarify or enhance the intent of the code or ordinance, that's. of the code or ordinance, that could be accomplished by taking emergency actions and a special meeting to clarify it. I also think the authority to have code enforcement is already in place. So with that comment and with what I submitted in writing, that's my comment on what the commissioners may can maybe look at in their code enforcement. But I think the literal interpretation of your codes is the simplest, easiest way. It's kind of like the sheriff posting the speed limit out on the highway at forty-five miles an hour. And someone goes forty-six, is that a violation? Or if he goes sixty, is that a violation? That's what you have in the planning and building when you don't adhere strictly to what the written code is and to have the enforcement. I think that's where you have to go. You have to go to the literal interpretation of what is already written. Some other issues, and just, this is all, so much of this has happened in just a short day or two, maybe three days, but. One of the properties I marked on the map, number nineteen, that was a mobile home that I was told the county had condemned, so Mid-State removed the tower. And it's been in that state for over a year, I believe. And if that is so, then maybe that property owner ought to be required to remove it or dismantle. Just a comment. And there's a lady, elderly lady in the community that's already requested the forms from the planning department to file a complaint. She's got a neighbor that's brought in junk and cars and stuff and accidentally piled them in the road. She has to drive around it to even get to her property. And if you need information on people that might dismantle some of these things that you actually take action against, I have a number and a name. One of the things I suggested, if you ever do get into enforcement actions where you're actually going in and dismantling or removing property or something used to, that the prisoners could go out on a, on a day's work venture. I don't know whether they're still doing that or not. I know they've been up north a couple different times doing things that they actually might even volunteer to do.
We've used some of our community service workers over the years and done some cleanups up there, Carl. The number and the name, would you please get that to Darwin after we get down here?
Okay.
Because we have some other things on our landfill that we need to teach for cleanup and so, any, anybody that's willing, licensed, contracted, licensed and insured to be able to do that type of work, we need that information, so get that to Darwin.
I don't know about the licenses, I know that they're willing workers, is all I know about. Another conversation I would think that either the planning department or the commissioners could have was be with our local water district. Erica, you know her. She can tell you horror stories about some of the things that people bringing out stuff, campers and automobiles and parking along their easement roads and so they can't even get into service or their water lines. So, you know, there's all kinds of issues when you start looking at code enforcement. Also, an issue of contention with me is I believe that the planning department signed off on a DEQ permit for an undersized septic. And Darwin and I have had some conversations about this and I believe that's true. And, and I think that's something that the county should, should address by maybe letting the party know that there was an error made. And, and I think he, the party even acknowledges that maybe that was an error and yet present, he hasn't even hooked up to it and I believe that's the reason why. This isn't a new issue with this property, so I think it's something that should be followed up on. Another note is I'm not sure what your arrangement is for employing building inspectors. I think you contract with someone out of Klammer Falls. Well, I know you do, but I don't know what your agreement with the inspectors are. One of the things I think that should be made clear, if you want code enforcement, is that when the inspector actually comes by something where he knows there's no building permit or we, where he assumes that there's violations, that he actually stops and leaves the notes rather than driving on by. I think that's happened very recently up there where a guy's constructing a second story in a mobile. The inspector went to the wrong address. But rather than asking further questions, he got the correct address where he was supposed to be going to make it an inspection to the lab.
He did, he did get the address and we have sent a letter of complaint.
Thank you. That's the first progress I've heard.
Thanks, Jim.
This last week, we just had another RV that was hooked up to power and water. And how this happens, which is, in my mind, your codes, hooking up a recreational vehicle on an R1 zone lot is in a direct violation of all the rules, but it happens.
I have a question there, Carl. Why is the Christmas Valley Water Site getting sent, getting them water? Because they say that you can't get water unless you have a plumbing permit. Well, we're not getting plumbing permits for that, so why are they taking water to that site?
I'll clarify that. Because I did stop by and, and ask her what their policy is in providing new hookups. The Board's policy is that if you have a septic system, they will provide you water. And what she does is she has to go physically see that the septic is there. She can't be told they have one. And if she physically sees that there's septic system, then the Board is allowing this to happen. Now, this, I'll wait for the next, the next issue. But on that same, in that same line, they got water because they had a septic. So I called Mid-State to see what their policies are on providing hookups to something that doesn't appear to be meeting code requirements. They say if you've got the money, they're going to give you the service. So they don't look at what the service is going to as long as you can pay the bill.
They're not responsible past the meters, what they're telling you.
That's correct.
But I don't understand how they're giving it green tag without, they have to get an electrical permit from us. We're not issuing electrical permits on campers in places that don't have building permits. Now, septic, if you're in an R1 zone, a septic is an outright permitted use, we can issue a septic permit in an R1 zone.
To help maybe clarify some of this, the paperwork in the septic permit process should clarify, state approvals are for primary residences only. And that's exactly what people do. They apply for a, a septic permit with the planning department and with the idea that they're putting in a primary residence on an R1 lot. And that's a simple process. Darwin signs the papers off, it goes to the DEQ guy and he comes out and he looks at the test holes and eventually you have a system. But what's, what happens is once the system is there, then there's no real control or monitoring of what gets hooked up to it. So then whereas the original paperwork out of approval paperwork ought to more clearly state that the approvals are given only for structures that meet county code compliance. So I, I think something, these are just little things, but just allow people to make the violations.
So just a second on the septic, clarify that a little bit, Jim. Whenever somebody comes in and gets a septic permit, isn't there something on there that it tests?
You can apply for a side valve perp test. That can be done without any land use approval, anything. They go out, they test the soils, tell you what type of system they're going to put in. Then they can apply for a construction permit. If they need to go through land use approvals, the construction permit, the LUCS, is not going to be signed off till land use approvals go, are approved. If it's in an R1 zone, which is an outright permitted use, they don't have to go through land use approvals, it's going to be issued. A person on there can say it's going to be a two-bedroom residence, we-
So that's where I wanted to get-
It's going to be issued.
What I went through personally is I had to let, you know, how many rooms and all this.
Yeah.
It was designed for that size. On this residential, it's an outright-
It's outright, it's still on there though. How many bedrooms, are you hooked up to a well, are you hooked up to-
So in this particular case, if this person got the permit and said, I'm going to just, I just want a small system for this, it was allowed by-
Yeah, I mean, the fact that, you know, I mean, we could swear everybody and, you know, you take everybody's word, what they put on that application with the truth. I mean, it's the truth and that's what's going to go on.
We do the inspections and everything, but that's governed by the state, correct? On the R1 of them being able to say a small system or a three-person, three-bedroom system, two bathrooms, how, who governs that?
Yeah, the DEQ. Warren will look at the size of home that's going to go in there with that lot, the acreage, the, like Carl knows, he's done septic's all his life. His son does them. They know exactly what, what Warren will approve per size of bedroom, just like if someone goes and does a remodel on their home, if they're putting in a new bathroom, it doesn't require the septic to be looked at again. If they're putting in a new bedroom, yes, then that triggers the DEQ to come back out there. But without having code enforcement, feet on the ground every day out there, personally, there's no way for me to know that that person didn't follow through with what they said on that application, kind of thing.
So whatever that person puts on there and tells our inspector, we're going to put this size in it, and it can't be a RV, but if it's going to be a smaller-
And I understand the interpretation that the Christmas Valley Town Site does not issue, that will not take water to the site if it's going to be an RV and/or if they haven't pulled a plumbing permit for that faucet, for that hookup. And a lot of that doesn't go on and it sounds like to me that the Christmas Valley Water Town Site is taking water if the person has the money, which is up where a thousand dollars or more.
It's, if they have a septic.
If they have a septic.
If they have a septic is the only thing that they look at. But you're right, I think, I think Jennifer is right. At one time, I think they did require a plumbing permit.
And really, that's the teeth right there. I don't, I'm not sure why. Mid-State can take, as far as electrical goes, they can take that pull out there all they want. But it's not going to be energized until they have come through us. Darwin has signed off for me to even issue the electrical permit. I'm not going to issue that unless there's building permits being pulled. I mean, we are daily talking to people on that phone and telling them, we are not issuing you an address. We are not issuing you electrical because you don't, you're not following the correct steps. I mean, we are doing our best from the office we're in to try to communicate about.
Well, I think my point here today would be is that maybe a conversation with either the water board or with Erica to clarify that, the plumbing permit issue, but there was an RV this last week that got hooked up. I, I don't have the number for it, but it is one that was actually marked on the map. But these are some of the issues that, that I just made notes of. If you're going to deal with code enforcement, all the fringe things that allow people to go ahead with violations, those loopholes need to be closed a little tighter if a guy can do that. And then, like I said just a little bit ago, I believe the easiest, simplest way to do this is use a literal interpretation of the code. And you don't get into the variances. Well, maybe this is okay. It's like forty-two miles an hour is not allowed. That's the stand you have to take, I think, with code enforcement. Anyway, that's what I had and I've appreciated and would like to thank the commissioners for asking me to play a part in this originally. Couple months ago, Dan came to me because he knows that I have been here trying to work on this, some of this stuff in the past years. This is kind of the way I see it now. I think my letter on how to go forward with code enforcement could be valuable to the commissioners if that's how they want to do it.
The very first thing we have is to educate folks on what codes are.
Absolutely, then, that's primary. And if you'll read these comments, you'll see the people want something done now. Like I said, these violations, if they're not happening daily, they're happening weekly. It's like we had the meeting on the first of June in Borb Rock. And when, I didn't actually bring this up because I didn't have the support at the time. And then on the twenty-second of June, when we had the meeting, just in that short period of time, I gave you a list of how many violations I see in just a small neighborhood. I think it was five or six violations in that short period of time. And then between the time that we had our meeting and then you followed up about a week later, there's more violations than we looked at then. In fact, you and I looked at one RV that was being set when we made the tour. It is going on like crazy. And so I think the advertising, the notices, the posts, that what is and is not allowed is, would be beneficial for everybody.
Yep, that would give not so much a violator, but also the general populace, an idea of what to contact us. We need to follow up on the enforcement, which means of feet on the ground.
Yeah, now, basically, all the work that I've done here the last month and a half or so, I've kind of kept undercover. I haven't been out running around the community telling people what's going on. I've tried to keep it down until we can actually get a method of, of actions that might be taken. But just in the day, day and a half that I've worked on this and to get this stuff here, people are going to be following up with a letter to the commissioners telling you to do something. It's coming, I can't stop it. Because, wow, you're doing this? They just jump on the bandwagon, babe. Everybody is seeing these violations occur just rapidly. So, anyway, that's what I had. Any questions?
Can I just add one thing? When we were up there as well, Jennifer and I actually been continuing conversations about from when we were up there before and about the education piece that we had discussed as far as running an ad in the local papers up there, as well in South Lake, because we have the same, we discussed that, we have the same issues across the county, not just North Lake. So Jennifer and I, I just want you to know, we are still working on getting things written up so that we can have just a little blurb every, every time that the paper goes out that says, keep in mind when you're, you know, whether it's septic or building permits or whatever. I just want you to know that we are still, still working.
Well, I appreciate that. And we all have to realize that when you start doing this, there are two sides to this story. There's people who want to support these RVs on R1 lots. And one gentleman found out about my complaint and he's so mad about it, he's listing his property, he's moving, he's tired, he doesn't want to be there. He thought that he was allowed to do anything that he wanted to do on his property. Him and I had a little conversation about that last night. Anyway, this is the issue.
All right, thank you, Carl.
And since you and I met last week on the subject during Budget Committee, Commissioner Sean brought up the concept of having a code enforcement and being with the deputy, but we see that that's not the thing, so we still-
But we see that that's not the thing, so we still need to, we have two things to address. Extra deputy and code enforcement. Whether we have the options to meet both of those, we're going to have an in-depth discussion. That suggestion was brought up in Budget Committee, not in a county court discussion. So it's my intent to have that on our next work session. To follow up with the nuisance code and deputy. That's going to have to prioritize someplace in there.
Still open session? We've talked, yeah, forming, Lake County forming a PAC to have an effect when the federal agencies come in and start to make rules within your county or limit what we can do within the county. That's just a little bit more information. I made three copies, one for each of you, so that... That's an issue that I've been hollering with the commissioners about for about a year and a half. And they're on the right track, and I'm just supporting with some more information.
This is the coordination aspect. Familiar with, kind of the session in Baker City last fall sometime. And we do have an ordinance for N24 that addresses, but it is dated. And we need to, Baker County took, came out with one, with their version, and Quirk County is coming out with their version too.
That's what that is, Erica.
Yeah, we can gain some information from that. Then it's a case of staying on top of what the federal agency doing, better communications so that we can engage them before they get ahead of us.
Oh, I forgot one thing. We talked about it would be beneficial if there was someone wanted to clean up their property, they had a place to take it to. A conversation with Mary's Mobile Homes, because they have a licensed place for storing old mobiles in North End County. She might be interested in leasing a corner of her property for, to the county for maybe disposing of some of this stuff. I meant to get you that phone number, you asked for it, I forgot about it, I'll get it to you.
So Carl, you're suggesting that the county be the one that does the dismantling of mobile homes? Is that what you're suggesting?
Pardon?
With that, what are you suggesting for the county to lease that? What would be our play in that? As far as, are you thinking that we would be the ones that dismantled and took care of disposing of them? What are, what are you suggesting?
Well, just visualize that you had to actually take forceful actions for, against someone to get something off of their property, and they didn't do it, and so you go in and do it.
And I, I don't know how we can do that legally. It's like a, it's a personal property. It is a vehicle, we, that, you, I mean, until they give us this, they go ahead saying, "Hey, yeah, come take this. I can't dismantle it myself."
There's a legal process for doing that.
If we don't own the property?
Well, if they're out of compliance and different things, but we generally, that's through sheriff order, whenever it gets down to that. We haven't done that for years, Carl. But if it comes to dismantling, say, an out-of-compliance mobile home, we end up legally able to do that. Generally, what, in the past, what we've considered on anything like that, and how to use it, whenever we get foreclosed land, is we will pay somebody or hire somebody that's licensed and insured to do that. A lot of times, our overhead cost to have the people and all that to just do that is usually more than it... I think it's an opportunity for the private sector as we move forward as we're going to be hopefully more aggressive on nuisance slash code enforcement. I think it's an opportunity for the private sector to consider setting up and being able to go in and clean this up as needed by the county or for the salvage site of it. I, I haven't envisioned the county going in there and totally dismantling and tearing it apart and getting rid of it. We do need a place for them to be able to haul that to whenever it comes to a bigger one, say, a mobile home. But I just want to make sure at least one commissioner, I don't envision us going in and doing the salvage side of it. I would think we'd probably contract that.
Well, some of the more severe enforcement actions is covered in the last, in the latter pages of your nuisance ordinance. But these aren't nuisances, these are land use violations. So, but some of that language might be appropriate.
And this Mary mobile entity, we would, as you're saying, we would do, I say, we'd contract it. That Mary person could be worked out of, it's an option. If we have somebody contracting to dismantle, it's an option for that person to work with Mary. Anything else you want? I appreciate you coming down for... You want?
Thank you, Carl.
And the vote continued to be on the table. What do you think?
Just, just for the record, I absolutely disagree with Carl on the violation, these being a land use violation. When you talk about a camper, a boat, you know, your personal vehicle being left on your property. That is not a land use violation, there's nothing in our code that suggests such. And when he says that these are land use violations, I absolutely do not interpret our code that way. I pull up on the screen a few different areas in our temporary use section. And anyone can review that, it's available online for those watching. And if Carl watches this on, back at home later. You know, any of your friends can use your lot temporarily for up to seven out of thirty days. That is an allowed use as well. And the code is silent as to how much you can use your own personal property for camping on your own property. Now, obviously, our code does talk about, you can't live in your, in your recreational vehicle without current building codes being applied for. But we're, you know, I, I appreciate Carl, I do agree, we are, there is a fine line between a violation and, and not a violation on our land use side of things when people have recreational vehicles stored on their property. It may appear that they're living there, that they may be there all summer through the nice months, and then decide to leave. They may be totally off the grid and not using water or sewer. There's nothing in our code that says that's a violation now. If we want to get more restrictive on people's personal property rights, that's something that needs to go out to the whole general public at a full notice if we're going to change the uses allowed in our zones. But if our ordinance is silent on a particular use, which to me seems like a pretty, you know, outright permitted use, to camp on your own property, if you own a piece of property, you know, whether it be in the forest use zone and you're going to go and pitch a tent or a yurt or something that doesn't require building codes or recreational vehicle, I, I'm absolutely not in support of adding language that, that restricts people's use of their private property for intermittent use when they're not going to be living on that property. I think that that's a really hard thing to, to tell people that they can't own a piece of recreational property or, or property that, that maybe used recreationally that, that is not their primary residence and never will be. You know, I mean, there's a lot of properties out near the sand dunes that are five-acre lots that...
Well, let's come back to the residential zoned areas that Carl's talking about. Residential zoned areas, for somebody to bring in an RV and live in it for, let's say, it's similar to a snowbird. Did they come here and they live in it four months out of the year? In a residential zone lot right now, is that allowable?
Yeah, there's nothing in our code that says otherwise. Now, they can't have, be hooked, they're not supposed to be hooked up to water or sewer or power. Those are, those are the key things. But, again, someone can apply for a septic without, they can, now it sounds like the water district's been allowing them once the septic's in to get that water put to the property. But still, no electrical permit is going to be issued on that property unless there is a permanent dwelling that means building codes being established on that property. And an address will not, also not be assigned. So, people are trying to get those things, and we're putting on the brakes for them and saying, you know, you can't, you can't get these last steps that you want to be living on this property without going through, or applying for the right building permits.
But there's obviously, that there's disconnect on some of these, like water district, maybe even the power company, because people are able to manipulate that.
And that was news to Jennifer and I, when Tony West and I first went around, first month on the job, or talked with Carl, talked with the water district up there, Erica, and, you know, we got particulars on, on that they would not assign water until there's a septic installed. But, you know, at that time, it was pretty much assumed that they were also going to have building permits, you know, being applied for as well, so...
So I think one of the things that Carl brought forward, which is good, is a little bit of the disconnect with the water district and other, I think we can shore that up pretty good and appreciate...
Some of this, some of this is way beyond what our code calls a land use violation and ordinance, you know, code enforcement issue. And, and so I know his interpretation is such, but as planning director, I'm, I guess, involved in the interpretation of this on a daily basis. And, you know, I'll tell you, for the last five years, I've applied it the same way, and it doesn't feel to me like it ever should be a violation. You own a boat and you own a yacht.
You truly are the planning authority and you rely on the state, so any information you get that says this is the interpretation, we could forward that to you.
So, so each county does things differently. I think on that tour, we heard Greg, senior, our building official, state that, you know, for someone's recreational vehicle or vehicle on their property had to be, you know, the DMV had to be current on, the licensing had to be current if it was going to be stored on a piece of property. But also that it had to be under a structure. You know, a structure requires a building permit, which then also requires primary, you know, purpose of that lot for dwelling i- if the zone requires. Now, our, our R1 zone says, says a whole lot about outright permitted uses in that zone, of which a storage building is outright permitted if it's going to be for, for the uses that are allowed in that storage building. So, you know, someone can apply a lot of ways for different uses and be totally, you know, lying to us, and we have to, you know, take a good faith approach until we can get, you know, a clear violation happen, and then we go and try to enforce it.
But that's it. The overall key point is educating folks so that they can let us know and then follow enough to visit the site on the ground, say, "Yes, it's permitted, no, it's not." We just need that first step.
Education is key, but I also think, you know, it comes down to a lot of taking ownership and personal responsibility for your community. There's, there's only so much we're going to want to spend time on this. And frankly, I'm also opposed to spending, you know, upwards to a hundred thousand a year on, on something that, that, you know, we continue to see this happening in that area where, where people will buy cheap land and it's all they've got, and that they will move onto these properties in direct violation. But if we expect them to go somewhere else and expect to, you know, have this be financially good for the county, I think we're in a totally losing battle. And I, I don't think it's good, sound business practice or even for the county to do that. Now, that's my personal opinion, but it...
Yeah, there's variations on that being...
Exactly, but, you know, a hundred thousand dollars could be spent pretty good somewhere else if we wanted to talk about where we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars and...
Well, we're only talking about the position when you're talking a hundred thousand dollars. When you get into the enforcement side and you go through the process of cleaning up a piece of property, and with all that, you better double that.
Oh, easily double it. And we're talking on a yearly basis. And so that's why, I mean, I, I think, you know, I appreciate Carl and any other property owner who, who has an issue with the way their community looks. But at the same time, you know, that community's been that way since it was first established in the sixties. A lot of those campers may have been there in the sixties. So, to say that, that all of a sudden we need to, to clean things up, I don't, I don't understand where, where the financial, you know, obligation that we're going to support this to the general public is best served. I mean, we're here to serve the whole public, not just a town site of Christmas Valley, which may have, you know, a hundred to two hundred...
This board wholly supports coming to the next level with a, with somewhat of a soft approach because of it has been forever. It doesn't matter if you're talking North Lake or the Lakeview area or the New Pine Creek area. But we're committed to start the process and start addressing these. One thing that Carl brought forward is, is continuing every day. If, if we at least try to stop some of those things that we believe are non-compliant or have not happened appropriately, that's a start. As we as commissioners look at the dollar set aside of trying to find out if we're going to fund a position, if we're going to be part-time, or if we're going to contract out, or whatever we want to do. But I do believe that there, there's some smaller opportunities to start right now, so...
You have to move in the direction, but it's not an overnight solution. And when it comes down to money, that's going to be a tough on us for the budget. But money also has a different color to it, which is economics of the area. Plus, it's a bigger picture.
And what tools do we have right now to start slowing some of it down? Because it is, it is the norm.
Yeah, I think the tools are in place. They're not, a lot of these same people who are moving onto these property, they need the address first and foremost. And a lot of it has to do with how they're, you know, getting their mail, their bills. But essentially, you know, their assistance, financial assistance to even, you know, maintain what little that they have. And, and without that address, which is, again, not going to be assigned until building permits for a, a permit, you know, structure are, are pulled, then, then that is the key deflector of these people living on these properties illegally if they, you know, need that address. Which, again, I believe that most of them do.
Going back to the R1, do they have to get an address before they do any of that stuff in an R1 zone?
Yeah, they have to have building permits tied with an address, tied with a septic, all, all the key components.
So they have to get the address before they can do the septic?
No, they, no, the address is the last step. It's the last step. Septic can happen at any time, on any given property and anywhere.
So we just need to flip that and make the requirement for them to have an address first? And then that would trigger part of all this other stuff? That's what I'm talking about. What, what do we need to look at?
We don't want them applying for an address...
Help find a solution.
At first, right, right.
Yeah, so maybe it's within what we already have in place.
I believe, I think one of the right page, what, a lot of what Carl's talked about are long existing, you know, what he feels is violations. And again, I'll, I'll state that the thirty-three that he showed us, there may have been a handful, possibly. But again, we, we were touring it pretty quick, and I didn't take pictures while I was up there, and, and get down to the nitty-gritty on every individual lot. But a lot of the ones that he showed us, there was no violation whatsoever in my opinion, according to what is in our code. Not, not just my personal opinion, but what's in our code.
I would latch on to his official complaint at this time that was submitted and that's the year in R1 zone. And address that, the law we look to address, if you can get to him right away on that. And I think that's a start in this whole thing with, with Carl. Globally, for Lake County, I think if we look at what our process is, and if we look at the electric companies, the power companies, the water districts and all that, then I think we might say, "Okay, well, we're not going to sign off until this." And they might say, "Well, you know, we've been pretty mean to being sure," as a policy. I think that's the easiest part. But his immediate, obviously, came through was, he had really has heartburn, he has a complaint on that one. That he's actually filed, arguing, filed appropriately on that. I don't mean to delay, but it's just, I appreciate Darwin, especially your views and everything. You are the planning authority. You are our voice as a board of commissioners, and we need to support you and we need to support the process. So, thank you, I appreciate the way that you're looking at this.
When it comes down to enforcement, we need to know about it first. We're down here, it's a long distance, we need some...
I think our sheriff department can, even though they wouldn't be the enforcer, but they are our folks on the ground. If they know what the, the basic rules and ordinance of which we need to give to the papers also so the general public know, if they happen to be on patrol and see something that looks out of kilter, they can stop and ask and relay it to either to you or to Jennifer to follow up on.
And because of that...
Look, we need to work together within our own county, becoming departments.
We talked a lot about this, I, I don't need to be on the record speaking about it too much more, but... But again, when we talk about economics, these same people that maybe live there illegally, they are still shopping in all the stores, they're still buying gas, they're still a part of that community in which they're putting any dollars that they have into that community. And, and I would... And I would, you know, I'd really find it hard to believe that those same business owners who are getting, you know, these people to stop into their, you know, places of business are going to be too thrilled if we're trying to push these people off their property when that's all that they have. And that's, you know...
And we're not talking about pushing people off.
Well, that's essentially what Carl's saying, because this is all these people have. If they had means to live somewhere else and had the money to do so, they would get under compliance. They wouldn't even move on their property legally.
He's the one that he talked to who's already put his place up for sale and leaving the community. So there's two sides to it. I appreciate what you're saying. It does have an effect, but we got to, we got to come to the middle and find a way to do our enforcement at the level that it still promotes the communities.
The most blatant ones we need to address and then let that have a rooty and affect out. I don't see us running people off their property, but how can we entice them to ensure that they are legal? Back to the agenda. Dave, you have something on the sheriff?
Yeah, speaking about new resources and mobile homes. Carl's going to stay here.
We have the old, old home we have out there where we're getting, we have the opportunity to get rid of it. And we are, we put agreement together with the person that is taking it away of removing it. That's why they're giving us a removal, some value to the county. Remind us when we broke this agreement that there's some value to the county so they can stay away in terms of being responsible for how they use it, what they do with it.
That's what we have done with Eric. What do they intend to use it for?
It's up to them.
It's up to them.
Like they, if you read this, they, they compile it by state, local law.
That's what people always say they're going to do. As long as it's not moved off somebody's use of a legitimate.
Right, right. And it's not, I don't believe that's what it's for. But for them to do that and for us to even allow them to take it, they have to apply. And if we find out and they don't, then we have this agreement in place.
So we...
I don't think we need to approve.
Just by consensus, if the format of this, you reviewed it, Bailey, I got a little bit of reading.
Yes, tell me about that for me.
Yes, I have, yes. So by consensus, you reviewed it?
Just received it before we got to the meeting, so a quick review of all permits required. So, and we need to get it off here for the conference.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Dave, Mr. Bailey, for putting that together.
Do you have anything else?
Yeah, I need to hear for the...
Well, you're talking about the floor.
Yeah, the floor, and then, well, we've been over that. Or the remodeling from the north end of the east wing where you get accessories served. And this is, has to do with the flooring, basically carpet. Yeah, carpet tile.
And you got two quotes, or three quotes, and it's worth to approve the quotes. And your recommendation was?
Diamonds.
It also a low cost.
Well, no, it's a little bit higher, but it's better quality than what they want to do.
And what you told me, Dave, on this, this higher quality is it will get some longevity plus the design of the carpet that will help this part of the segment. They actually captured the dust and dirt off.
Right, it's called the catcher, it's called the, oh, crash cane. It's a catch. It's called the catch sun. When they come in, it takes eighty percent of the dirt off the feet as they step on them when they first come in. And it continues on to just a higher quality of a carpet for longevity. Instead of replacing it for four years, they replace it for twenty years. And that's what, yeah.
Justify it, yeah.
And Mr. Bailey, we have the Board of Commissioners to go with any of the bids. We don't, we're not going to have to go with the lowest bid. Now you're not.
Especially if there's a rationale, right?
So, Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the quote provided by Diamond in the total amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars. And it also option, has option one in there to add three hundred and three dollars. Is that correct, Dave?
Pardon? I was looking.
That add three hundred and three dollars, that's in addition to the twelve eight fourteen?
If we go with the...
Yes, yes.
So my motion is to accept both of those members' approval.
Second motion. Tell me, one got three oh three, three hundred and three dollars?
The three hundred and three is, is the use of that one carpet. I was telling you about to take eighty percent.
Yeah, it's right there.
As you're walking in, as you walk in, uh, if we, it's, that walk off carpet, that's what it's called. It is, if we put, if we, if we use it when you first walk in, it just really absorbs the mud. It just helps from tracking it because the law enforcement, you know, they've been out and about. They might have feces or whatever on their...
Yeah, crap.
And it really absorbs, absorbs it.
My motion is to accept the, the, for both the primary carpet and the entrance carpet.
Yes, yes.
Any other discussion?
No, on a favor, aye.
Thanks, Dave. And again, just for the audience, that's to refurbishing the, with the accessories off you and the sheriff. The accessories moved down at this end close to the curb. And we remind them to give the sheriff more space and also to clean, I thought, rotation of the areas. And this carpet will go into that area. Good job.
Thank you.
Oh, Val?
Then we went out for three bids on the grant, that ski hill grant. We got that Parker X grant. We are going with Friday Investors. They come in, the lowest bid for the, for the well at the ski hill to have potable water, to improve and to make it more user-friendly or recreational opportunities that are far as hiking, biking in different events.
And potential progress.
And this helps in the summertime too for use of different, to have these CD sheets up there. You know, these have different supplements a lot of there.
One makes me, just for the, one makes me the water source up into...
Because this is just, well, it just comes off the hill. It's just a spring.
There's a spring.
And the, and you don't flow inside, you know, you don't get very little water in the summer that it dries up.
This well, we've talked for a fight sometime, a year round.
Yes.
So I'll move to approve the well construction proposal for the cost of thirty thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars through the, and this will be primarily with some in-kind work paid for through the Parker Red grant. And just add on to that, Dave, you have a verbal that they'll get it done early this...
Yes, when I call him to let, tell him to move forward, it'll be two to three weeks that he can get started. And then when he does get started, it could take two days or it could take one month to get it done. But it will be done this summer.
I'd recommend after this approval for you to get that in at least an email or an e-mail just. So we get it done this fall.
That was a motion to accept the Friday industry for the well. Second.
Aye.
And also, this is through grants and in can match and other things. It's not general accounting, general.
Yes, it's all in. Right now, there's a lot of accounts in there.
Thank you for the work, Donald.
All right, thank you.
Big deal.
Uh, claim of detention at GA, which has come over yesterday. I want to focus on the, the audience on camera. Uh, this is for housing, juvenile violators. We don't have a capacity or desire to execute your mousetrap in our jail, so we rent some space of kind of account.
Yeah, we've done this for years. This is no increase in cost. This is fiscal impact of twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars a year. That's a guarantee of two hundred and twenty bed days. That's equal to a hundred and ten dollars per day. So with that, I'll move to accept intergovernmental agreement as presented.
I'll second. And as community person mentioned yesterday, it's being fully utilized this year. Mental health protocol.
We need to call for a question. Aye.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Sometimes I assume things.
Yeah, I know. It's easy when your chairman, if you just want to get through, you get on to the next one. Yeah, you're supposed to keep...
Actually, for the audience, I was fully aware. I was testing the S E P.
I pass it to you when you pick.
Okay, so protocol agreement is for our mental health after hours service that takes those initial calls. There is a slight increase to the premium, but other than that, it's the normal agreement.
Move to approve the protocol. That's an amendment? Is it called an amendment? Or is this new contract?
It's an amendment.
Contract amendment as presented?
I'll second. Again, this is for twenty-four hour service call with that mental health program. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, most of you. And the funding of that would of course be funded for health funds. Uh, fleet vehicle RFP.
Our fleets, this RFP is for the purchase of two vehicles from Sheriff's Department as approved during the budget process.
Move to approve the, um, we have two different things here. Before I make that, I'll reflect that this is an RFP, but it says RFQ at the top of this here.
Yeah, it should be an RFQ, sorry.
It's an RFQ?
We're closed, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'll move to approve the RFQ as presented.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's for two figures in the Sheriff's Department.
Correct.
And we've left open the hearing on transportation. I think it's time that we close that hearing. Anything else to address on that?
Once you've closed the hearing, there has been no comments brought forward on either hearing. Give this opportunity to approve and accept the TSP ordinance number one fourteen as all-in-all guidelines and hearing process. So I wouldn't make that motion. That should have been, I'll make a motion to accept ordinance number one fourteen in the matter of text amendments of the Lake County Conference of Plan Zoning Ordinance and the Land Development Ordinance, the Board of Commissioners of Lake County Organize as follows. And that it takes care of the land use side of it and the TSP itself is just what the TSP is.
Now, when we, we submit this for notice of final adoption, the state will include a signed copy of the ordinance and they'll appreciate that.
This was for the zoning ordinance, is what the hearing was. I molded the TSP on that. Apologies.
And that was a motion to accept ordinance one one four.
Yes.
Any other discussion? If the General Pacific Police two readers are full, they can contact Doug or Denise. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes.
We're one step from the eighteen.
Move to approve May eighteenth, two thousand sixteen minutes as presented.
Any other? All in favor?
Aye.
Any legal updates for general session?
No, we have two for executive session.
And those are under litigation.
I hope you mean potential litigation.
One is ongoing litigation, the other is potential.
Then, I just did that. You got this, Mike?
Yes.
Are these going to take hours? Do we need a break before this?
Uh, I think, I'll have a break.
Thank you.